Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, it won't let me get on for some reason from the web browser. Uh, keeps kicking me out.
No, try, try it again, Jim, because what happened was, um, we had another meeting and the system didn't recognize that we were done. So it finally, it finally.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Yep, so try it again.
Oh, yep, you're right. Just came up.
Good.
That's funny. Thanks.
Yep.
Well, I'll listen on both just in case while I'm cooking.
Okay. Well, maybe, can you mute, can you mute your thing? Because, um, I hear your TV and everything.
Yeah, well, someone could kill that, so, okay, will do.
Okay. Bye.
... of our meetings remotely for the last couple of months. And by and large, it's been going well. You know, people have behaved themselves and we've been able to get our work done. We have started to get questions about when we'll be returning to in-person meetings. And my opinion on that is I'm going to hold off on that for as long as possible, primarily because I don't know if we, if the town has the technology in place to do a combined remote and in-person meeting. I'm not sure what those would look like. But I do suspect that, you know, in the, in the near future, later this fall, we're going to have to figure out how to do that. So I just wanted to flag that up to the town council and the mayor that we will have to be thinking about how to hold those kind of meetings where people who feel the need to can participate remotely fully when other people are onsite.
Very good, thank you. Actually, I was speaking about that this morning with someone. You know, the problem with the council chambers is if you put, as an example, the town, the town council in there with the mayor, with our council, council administrator and the camera person, it's very tight because we're sitting so close to each other as it is. But there is, the, the system that we use, there is a way to make comment, but it's certainly not a perfect system. So definitely something we, we're going to need to look into. I absolutely agree. So, are there any other commission or board reports at this time? Hearing none, comments of town councillors?
Uh, this is Mary.
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on, Mary, you're muted. Hope that we can find you.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yep, you're unmuted now.
Okay. I received an email from the League of Women Voters and it said that due to the virus, many long-term poll workers, who tend to be seniors, will not be working this year, mainly due to the COVID-19. And they're asking us to get the word out that they are looking, not necessarily in Ledgerd, but throughout the state, they are looking for workers to work at the polls, both during the primary and the election in November. The minimum age is 16, which I thought was quite young, but that's what they said. You will be trained and you will be paid. So if anybody is interested in helping out at the polls, at the elections, just contact the registrars in Ledgerd. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other town councillors have comments?
Tony has his hand up.
Thanks, Fred. Yep, Tony Sibilia, I just, I want to encourage all of you to take a look at what has been done on that track project. I was there today, they were painting the lines. It's absolutely phenomenal, the quality of the work and the way it looks. Really kind of cool to see, this is my first major construction project on the council from, you know, discussion to completion. And I think that, I think that everybody's going to be thrilled when they see it. I've been, I've been there multiple times over the last couple of months, but today was really the wow factor as the, the track itself is painted. The lines are in place and I was standing with Jim Bunicor on it and he said, remember what this looked like last year? Just an incredible transformation. I encourage everybody to at least get out there and take a sneak peek.
Thanks, Tony. Any other councillors have comments at this time? I would just like to say that we will be voting tonight on the new committee or standing up the, the Community Relations Committee. And I have asked councillor Angles, councillor Washington and councillor Psom to be members of that committee. I've asked councillor Washington to chair it. And with that, I have asked councillor McGrattan to chair admin because at this time, we have Andra, councillor Angles, serving on finance, admin, and now this new committee. And that's a pretty heavy load. And in fact, there was a time where if you served on finance, you didn't serve on any other committee. And she's on three, so I thought her being chair of admin, we'd lighten her load a little bit. And councillor McGrattan was so kind as to agree to that. However, if there is anybody that would like another committee and could relieve Andra of her full burden on the admin committee, I'm sure she'd, she'd like that. But for now, we'll move forward the way it is. And now we'll move to review and approval of prior minutes. I will entertain a motion for minutes of the June 24th Special Executive Session in the June 24th minutes.
So moved.
A motion was made by whom?
John Marshall.
John Marshall and seconded by?
Bill Psom.
Bill Psom. Any corrections, additions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Bingle?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. You will find the communications list on the portal. I have no referrals this evening. I'll move forward to council subcommittee liaison reports, admin.
... met last week and we have several items tonight on the agenda.
There's. Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Uh, finance.
Finance met last week as well. This is councillor Psom and all of the items we discussed at our meeting are on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Land juice. Anybody from land juice?
Land juice has not met.
Okay, thank you. Liaison reports. Bill, let's start with you for liaison report.
Bill, you're muted.
Well, I'm happy I was muted because I was just fumbling for what I was going to say. Last week, I unfortunately did not open my report to read it. So I'll read it to the next town council.
Okay. Um, any, any other liaison reports?
Mary. Oh, John.
Uh, which one you want first? Go ahead, Mary. Okay, I'll get it. All right, building community met last week. Mike Brennan is retiring. He's the superintendent that took over when Matt left, when Matt was done other projects. So I'm hoping the transition goes a little bit smoother this time. We've had a few minor issues, nothing too big. Small punch lists at the middle school. For example, like the media center's smart board has no audio, kind of like my laptop did a few minutes ago. But we've had multiple issues with that contractor, so we switched to another one, but hopefully it'll do a better job performing. The, the punch list for both schools down to about 100 items. One big one, the, the floor in the gym is still an issue. We're not sure of the plans going forward, but we're having an expert come in to look at it. And he'll probably recommend the same thing that I recommended a few months ago when we first had this issue. Four classrooms still have HVAC noise, but it's built as designed, but the noise is still above acceptable levels. So we're looking in to see what we can do about that. Probably involve a redesign and a rebuild at some point. The farm marshal looked into the safe rooms and the only issue we really had was the, the horns in the strobe lights need to be moved out of harm's way and then they're ready to use. The safe rooms are where kids go just to calm down a little bit and get out of, be by themselves a little bit and collect their thoughts. The final plating is being done at both schools. They're knocking down their punch list. Gallup Hill, the cooling system, it's not cool enough. Could be a balancing issue, they're looking into that. Have you seen the pictures on social media? The track and field is looking awesome. Thank you, Tony, for posting the pictures. There's a couple of lights there that are a little out of adjustment, but we're going to wait till we change the light bulbs for the first time and we'll deal with it then. It's not that big a deal. The high school asbestos project is going good. The contractor's down the tunnel, measuring every single pipe. It's going to run like eighty to ninety thousand dollars to insulate everything and clean that up. The contractor, Hasbro, tried to bill us for work that he didn't do and we caught him at it. So we're, we're holding payment until that gets cleared up. And I'll leave you with this final thought. I always wonder where, where titles and words come from. And you've heard me mention punch list quite a bit. And why they call it a punch list? The phrase takes its name from the historical process of punching a hole in the margin of the document next to an item on the list indicating that the work has been done. Two copies were punched at the same time, one for the architect and one for the contractor. So that's why we call it that, a punch list. And that is my report.
Well, thank you, John. Does anybody have any questions for John? Are there any lia, other liaison reports?
Yes, Mary. Okay, the library commission. Library commission has been meeting via Zoom since March. They are now open and allow 50% of capacity. They only had one incident where somebody refused to wear a mask, but the person did their business and got out quickly. They have not had any in-house programming, but they will be having one via Zoom next Tuesday. And the name of the program is Our Amazing Human Brain. Returned items are put in the book drop. They are quarantining returned books and they're wiping down the, as they go along during the day. Use of public computers also has been reduced. Housing Authority. The Housing Authority met for the first time earlier this month and we sat outside with masks and kept our social distance. And everybody down there seems to be doing well and they have had no issues with COVID. Conservation Commission met the other day for the first time since March and they are pushing hiking in Ledgerd. There are interactive maps for the 13 trails that they have jurisdiction over and they're being completed as part of a trails mapping project. All the updated, updated maps will be on the town website. Megan Reed, a member of the commission, has reached out to Parks and Rec as they're updating their trail brochure. They're working together on developing a hike-ledged program. They did a survey and they got very positive results and the one complaint is most people didn't know where the trails were. And so education is going to be a big part of that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for Mary? Any other liaison reports?
Chairman Davis, this is councillor Psom. I pulled up the WPCA report and there's quite a bit of news there, so I thought I would share it with the council tonight because there's some important.
Very good, thank you.
So Loftus Well Field has been officially abandoned. As you all know, that we determined there was no opportunity to lease the wells to a commercial bottling company. Due to restrictions of easement, the WPCA voted not to extend the diversion permit and followed the DPH process to shut down the well. So it is now officially out of service. We are required to abandon a well. There's a specific process for that. You have to fill the well and do a bunch of other stuff. Also, receivables are down slightly despite the COVID-19 pandemic. The WPCA is working on an RFQ for a waste line, waste line from Ledgerd Center for the Ledgerd Center School Development. There is no clear plan yet on where that line might go or what to do with it, but they are working on it. And as I think you all know, it may not even be possible, but they're, they're looking at it. They are also working on requests, quotes for the demolition of the Gallup Hill Tank, which is longstanding, abandoned and needs to come down because it, it will become a hazard. Further, the billing services contract and the water operations contract are coming due. Water Operations still has another two years, but we did get quotes just this week for the billing services and WPCA is in the, in the midst of looking at the three quotes that, or proposals that we got. Hydrogen flushing is complete. And councillor Marshall, thank you for that excellent report on the punch list in the schools. And I'm happy to report that I got more information about the Ledgerd Center tank. It was inspected along with the Holmberg tank in approximately 2019. They do it every five years via robot. They send a robot down inside the tank, which is what is most important to inspect. And he said Ledgerd Center tank looks good and Holmberg tank is in need of a repair, specifically a diffuser pipe. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for councillor Psom? Any other liaison reports? I'm moving on to the mayor.
Good evening, everybody. Quick, quick update on COVID. We're at 32 confirmed cases in Ledgerd. We've only had two additional cases since June 15th, so we're very stable. And in all of eastern Connecticut, we have one hospitalization right now. So hopefully that will remain that way. It's actually one in, one including Tallinn County. So New London County, Wyndham County and Tallinn County combined have one hospitalization, which is very positive. Going by Ledgerd Center School, former Ledgerd Center School, you've probably seen the excavation in front. That is part of their site plan process, which will incorporate parking in front of the building. They have kind of two anchor tenants, if you will, on the left end and the right end, one being a new daycare facility at the left end and they're going to utilize the existing place gate. The right end is kind of a lateral move for alumni wine and spirits, which is over next to Valentino's right now. And they are going to occupy the gym and increase their footprint. And then there is a new photographer who is going to have his studio and business in the school. So, so far, a nice start on that. We did submit our LOT-SIP grant for the multi-use path going from Ledgerd Center to the high school. This is an approximately 10-foot wide sidewalk, jogging path and bikeway. And we look pretty good right now. So there are eight projects total that were submitted. Ledgerd's project ranked fourth out of eight projects. But I would say that the top seven projects, seeing what the funding levels are and what the project costs are, the top seven projects will get funded. So we're in pretty good shape for that. The 5310 van grant, you recall that? That was something that we did in early June. We did submit it. We are one of 10 applications. The pool of funding this year is $189,613. So that is going to be able to buy three vans. So three out of the 10 applicants are going to be the lucky recipients this year. And we're hopeful that we're one of them. DOT sent an announcement out that their bridge program, the state bridge program funding for this year and next year is being zeroed out. So the bridge that we had anticipated doing, the Lantern Hill Road Bridge, that funding is gone no matter what at this point. So because we never, we never got Stonington to come to the table anyway, we weren't going to be doing it. But now we know at least for the next two years, that funding is gone. The state also canceled a regional performance grant. This was a grant that council of governments applied for and we were very confident we were going to receive until they canceled it. And that was going to provide for a regional HR resource as well as a regional grant writer and a zoning enforcement officer that would be kind of a floater to assist the different towns with the needs. We felt it was going to be a good opportunity, but again, finances being what they are with the state, that got zeroed out as well. The council of governments also had their second meeting for the long-term disaster recovery team. This is a group, the governor required all towns to have a disaster recovery team. The COG decided to take it on and do it as a group instead of individual towns trying to come up with generally the same process. So they're making progress in the next month. We're supposed to have a draft of what that will look like and then that will be a document that we can kind of use as a template to model for our, the town of Ledgerd. So that'll be good. Compost bins, we, we put a notice in the events magazine about the compost bins that we receive from Scara. They're $45 apiece. I picked up 10 of them from Scara and we only have two of them left. So they have sold very well. People are making their own compost or, or, well, they're making their own compost anyway, but they're making their own topsoil, which is even better. And it's also reducing the amount of food waste in the waste stream. So the Scara report for Ledgerd is very favorable. Our tonnage has actually been down month over month over month. So with the exception of April and May, which I guess is when people really start staying home, the, the garbage stream has gone way down in tonnage, seven to eight tons under budgeted every month so far. So that's positive. Squaw is going to be increasing their water rates effective in October. It's going to be a 5% increase. So people that are on squaw water can expect a eight to 10 to $12 per quarter increase in their fees. But it was something that they had to do to be able to, you know, zero out their, their deficit budget that they were working on. I had a meeting with the Mashentucket Tribe yesterday to discuss social service needs as well as other topics that they wanted to discuss. We talked about the Mashentucket Food Pantry as well as our own. They are coming to meet with us tomorrow to discuss what our programs are. And then we're hoping next week, we are going to go back to Mashentucket to visit their food pantry and their social service department and understand, better understand what their programs are as well. So it was a very good meeting. They did reiterate that they not have a food need. Apparently, they were contacted by a group that was looking to put on a food drive and Rodney said, no, thank you, we are all set. So it's not a food issue over there and we don't, we don't turn down anybody that comes for food. So hopefully, everybody understands that if somebody is in need of food, they will get a bag of food to start and they will get an application. And if they qualify, we will put them into the, into the process. Same, same thread, we also had a meeting at the Burger Barn today for the expansion of those three garage bays, carriage house bays on the left side of the barn at the church. And that was a pretty productive meeting. We have a tremendous amount of food that is donated and we have a real need for storage for that food. So we're going to come to an agreement with the congregational church to, to fit out the inside of roughly half of that building to make clean, dry, climate-controlled storage for food and beverages for the food pantry. So hoping to get that done ASAP, September, October deadline type of thing. Had a meeting today with American Ambulance to go over our figures for the month of June. We had 83 ambulance runs with an average response time of nine minutes and five seconds. There were zero missed calls. So American has done a tremendous job for us. This was something that you know was a big issue a couple of years ago now, I guess it is. And they have done an amazing job. They have been tremendous with providing their figures and coming out and meeting with us on a routine basis. They even break it down by the, the purpose of the call. And the number one thing that we have right now is people falling. So Steve Holyfield, our AES Administrator of Emergency Services, is going to be working with Karen Getchis in nursing to come up with something for our next events magazine to try to work with people on how to avoid slips and falls at home, maybe changing or even visiting people's homes to look at what they have in terms of, are, are there things that are the cause of a trip and fall? Things like a braided rug that maybe 20 years ago was fine and now if they're, you know, maybe shuffling a little bit more, it may be an issue. So, but kudos to American Ambulance and to Steve Holyfield. He's done a tremendous job for us already, so I thank him. The last thing you will see, excuse me, at the town hall right now, there is a new stainless steel ballot box, which is mounted in concrete. If you walk up to the front of the town hall, it's going to be immediately to the left, just behind the stone wall. That ballot box is going to be active for the primary on August 11th. And in the special session, they're going to be voting on, voting that same way through the ballot box, through absentee balloting for the November election. The information that we're receiving so far in terms of people understanding how to fill out an absentee ballot and get it correct so that it counts is an issue right now. So I think we're going to have to collectively work on some sort of campaign to, to let voters know the steps that you need to go through. In other words, when you do an absentee ballot, you have to put the ballot in an envelope, seal that envelope, sign the outside of that envelope and then put that envelope inside another envelope to mail it. And 15 to 20% of the people do not sign the exterior of the interior envelope, which disqualifies that ballot. So we're going to have to, I think if, if we end up doing the full November election that way, we're going to have to make sure that people are, understand fully to make sure that if you want your vote counted, you have to follow these steps. So that will take a collective effort for us to make sure that we get that message out and understood so that, you know, people aren't wasting their time. We want their votes to count. And so. And we'll have to work more on that, but I'll let you know as the special session progresses. The other thing I wanted to point out too is the, we did, we did win a grant for the build-out of what I'm calling the Burger Barn over there at the church. And that was about $5,340, I believe. But we are going to need more. So in the process of doing the sustainable CT, we, we opened ourselves up for IOB grants that are in your back, in our backyard. And it's a group of, of very wealthy individuals and corporations that will match dollar for dollar our donations for a project that we do. So I'm thinking that that might be a really good project for that. And if we can do a little video and get that out there on social media and see if we can get people donating to help with the, the build-out of that space. I can see us, you know, if, if we can raise $5,000, we're going to have $5,000 instantly matching our, our grant, so, or our donation. So I'll let you know more about that, but we will, we will work on that project tomorrow and then let everybody know next year, or next week. I'm sorry, I'm just looking, I'm looking, Mike, you just mentioned something, okay. Oh, yeah, a great idea. It's talking about doing a kind of a step-by-step video clip that we can do on our website about how to complete an absentee ballot. I think that's a great idea. We will definitely do that, and we can also share that via social media. Because, like I said, you don't want somebody to take the time to vote, and then it gets circular filed because it was declared ineligible. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any question? Anybody have any questions for, any councilors have any questions for the mayor? Hearing none? We have, we have no business? Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Okay, moving on. Item number one, admin.
I make a motion to stand up the Town Council Community Relations Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, Andre.
We, we, it, it's time to stand this committee back up and facilitate some community discussions and look for solutions to some current controversy.
The, just to clarify, although we are standing up the committee, it is, it is actually a different name than the original committee. The original committee name was Community. Roxanne, help me with that.
Services.
Okay, so it, it did have a slightly different charge. But this one, the name makes more sense. And I, I'm, I know you have hard work. I thank you, the three of you who have agreed to serve on this committee. I, I know you have good ideas, and I expect that you'll be very busy. And I expect that you will be starting soon as far as meeting. And obviously, those meetings will be open to the public. And I anticipate workshops, perhaps a resolution to start and to move forward. Any other comments?
Chairman Davis, this is Counselor Psom. I'd like to make a few comments.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll keep it short. I wanted to let people know that people who have thoughts and suggestions or just want to talk, should reach out to the members of this committee, including me. And I will put my contact information up on the town council site. Well, it is, it is on the town council site. I meant to say on my Facebook page. My telephone number is 860-572-7181. I welcome anyone to reach out. I've actually started some conversations, and I want to hear from people. So my number again, 860-572-7181. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Counselor Davis, this is Mike Washington.
Yes, Mike.
Sorry for my audio. I did, I had to turn off the video because it's, it's pixelating on me, and everything's coming kind of garbled. I probably got kids downstairs eating up Wi-Fi with Xbox and everything else. That being said, I, I really look forward to the, to what this, what this committee can do. I urge everybody, as Counselor Psom said, stated, and Andre, that we, we, any kind of input people have was greatly appreciated. This is a, this is a committee for the town. It's to address people's concerns, people's experiences, trying, trying to change that projection of what, where we're going, the trajectory of where we've been going. And I think that through the involvement of the town, the police department, the Mashin Tucket Pequot Tribal Nation, the Board of, Board of Ed and their Diversity Inclusion Committee, they're going to be standing up. That I think we can get a lot of great things done. So I'm looking forward to whatever input, you know, ideas, possible solutions that people want to propose. Nothing's too outlandish. It's like anything else. You put everything into the box, you pull it out, and you give everything its own opportunity to see the light of day. And you never know where it can go. So I just want to encourage people, they want to get, reach out to me, myself. They can do it through the, to the town website for my email. But if you want to send it directly, it's just mawash number nine at AOL.com. That's my personal one, in case it's something you don't want to, you don't want somebody to hear about, talk about. You just want me to know your perspective. I've kind of lived it. I understand it. I think the people in the, the council as a whole understands it. And that's one of the reasons why this was, this has been standing, standing back up. I think there's some really good things to come out of this, if everybody participates. And keep in mind, I'm going to have to say this, only because in this world of COVID-19, it's going to be a little longer process than we probably like. People are going to have to submit more stuff in writing. Because if you sat on these, these web meetings and these Zoom meetings, depending on what you got for the internet connection or whatever, it can be very hard to understand. And this is not a time for somebody who has thoughts and opinions to be lost in the garble of trying to see it and hear it through the media that we're using. So please feel free to put it in writing, you know, with every your personal thoughts are, and submit it, submit it into the committee, so you can submit it to me personally. I get a lot of calls from people. I get a lot of emails from people. And it's, I'm looking forward to getting more. And I, I will go on, and which you'll find out, with me being the committee chair, which may not be good, is that I have, I'm not, I'm never short for talking and listening to people. And I think this fits me to the T for this one. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else have any comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sabelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item, Andre.
Motion to appoint Mr. Jeremy Norris D., 12 Old Fort Lane Ledger, as an alternate member of the Water Pollution Control Authority for a three-year term ending April 11th, 2023, to complete a vacancy left by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion, Andre?
Just for, for public awareness, you know, folks who want to volunteer for these, these committees and commissions, typically just submit an application explaining why they, you know. God bless people who want to serve on these subcommittees, and especially Water Pollution Control.
Andre, before your time on the council, the town council actually served as the Water Pollution Control Authority.
I heard, and I know that Counselor Psom has said it's one of the best days of his life when that was turned back over.
Yes, it, it was very painful. Any further discussion?
No.
Roxanne, Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sabelia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Now, I'm looking at a paper copy because I'm on my phone. I have the appointment of Ms. Jessica Cobb was number two. Did we miss that, or is it in a different order on, online?
Online, she's number three.
Yeah, okay. Then go ahead, next.
A motion to appoint Ms. Jessica Cobb, D., 7 Whipper Will Drive Gales Ferry to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending December 29th, 2020, to complete a vacancy left by Ms. Coors.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Washington? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
I mean, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sabelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. The next item, is this, I just want to make sure, again, I'm on paper here. Is this the ordinance for the control of dogs?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to, would you like to review this at the next meeting with the suggestions that you received? I don't think any of them were substantive in nature, but it may need some tidying up. Does that make sense?
I agree. I would like to look at this one more time with, with Nate's submissions to, to make sure it's really in good shape before, I, I agree. I don't think any of his suggestions were substantive, but I do want to get it in better order before we re-present it. And for some reason, it's not even listed as a motion on the agenda. It's listed just as a continued discussion. I don't know if that was a typo, but.
Yeah, no, it, it's supposed to be a motion.
No, Roxanne, you're supposed to say yes. I thought we would need more discussion. Anyway, we will, we, we will just move, we will not act on that one. The, I'm trying to see if the ordinance, the retirement plan one, was there anything that needed changed on that one? I think there were just a couple of minor, very minor details. I'll leave this up to you, Andre, if you want to act now and make those small changes. Or would you like to revisit that one before we actually vote on it? Either way, it's fine with the chair.
I think we can move on this one. There were just a couple, was it just a grammar issue?
I think it was where John Radelico, the chairman of the pension board, wanted to add to Section 3.1 the following language. Members serving on the pension board on the effective date of this amendment shall continue to serve on the retirement board until the expiration of the term to which they were appointed. So that way, there's no question as to whether the current pension board members were continuing to serve as the retirement board.
Sure.
It, it's just really, it's really a clarification. It's not an, it, it, it's not a substantive change.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion on this one. Andre?
I'm, I'm looking for my place, sorry. There we are. I motion to adopt a proposed amendment to Ordinance Number 200-010 and ordinance establishing retirement plans and a retirement board for the Town of Ledger General Government and Board of Education employees as contained in the updated draft of June 5th, 2020. Do I need to include language with John's amendment?
Yeah, you should say, you should say as included in the updated draft dated today, 7/22, to include the language as a friendly amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So motions made and seconded. Any further discussion?
There's one quick thing from the mayor. The pension board met on Tuesday morning, and they are very much looking forward to this moving ahead. So I think that was the last edit that you saw or that you just read is the last thing that they envisioned. So they're looking forward to having it done.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sabelia?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries.
Counselor Psom says yes, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
That's okay.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Okay, next item. We had a couple of questions for the mayor on this one. Andre, do you want to just clarify those items we discussed?
So should I make the motion to open it up for discussion?
Why don't we go ahead and make the motion, and then we can discuss?
Okay. A motion to adopt proposed amendments to Ordinance Number 100-011 and ordinance establishing a Youth and Social Services Board for the Town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated June 10th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
So, Mayor, there were a couple of questions. One is, just to clarify, that the language update is to align with the grants that provide most of the salary for our youth services director. Correct?
That is, that is correct. So for Kate Sikorski, that pays, that grant pays about 60% of her annual salary.
Thank you. And then more, another, more questions were around the constitution of that board and the very specific roles that need to be filled for committee members. So, you know, that there needs to be a, someone from a private youth services agency. You know, we need to find an elector under the age of 21. Is, where do we hope to find these people? And is that also a reflection of the language in the grants that we're applying for?
That, that is actually directly from the grant that requires that the board that oversees that department is made up of those individuals. So I think a police officer was on there. You know, I, I have reservations and concerns about that because we only have one or two police officers that actually live in the Town of Ledger. So that could pose a problem at some point. You know, it's not to say that you can't have a vacancy, because you could certainly have a vacancy. It just changes, it makes it a little bit more difficult to have a quorum if somebody is vacant for six or eight months because the, the position is vacant. But yeah, the, the ones that, in particular, that we had concern over filling was the police officer who is an elector of the town, registered to vote, and a police officer was one that was a challenge. And then again, the under 21-year-old can be, certainly be a challenge. So, but I think we have to try our best because that grant is one of the bigger grants that we receive. And Kate's youth, youth counseling, even, you know, parent counseling is, is very busy, very active. She's done a lot in the way of online work and still in-person work. So it's, we felt that it was, it was very important for us to go ahead and move ahead with the language that they provide. And we will have to do our best to make sure that we can fill out a, a board that resembles what they are needing. that we can, uh, fill out a, a board that resembles what they are needing.
Uh, Mayor, this is Mayor, I have a question for the Mayor. Um, there is five, uh, people listed as members, or you would hope to be members. Uh, do you have any ideas for others? This says, uh, at least seven people.
So, so, we still have, uh, when we, when we disbanded the Social Services Board, uh, we let everybody that was on the Social Services Board acted, that was active at the end, that, um, they would certainly be open for reapplying.
Okay.
Ms. Cruz Clacken has also expressed interest, and there is a, an application from her as well for a position on that, that board. So, I don't foresee us having a problem at all, uh, filling out a complement, a full complement for that board.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia? Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Uh, motion carries. Uh, Finance, Mr. Saum?
I move that the Town Council approve a proposed authorizing resolution of the Ledyard Town Council, State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, as contained in the draft dated July 15, 2020. In addition, authorize the Mayor to sign a fiscal year 20, State Homeland Security Grant Program, Region Four Memorandum of Agreement.
Second.
Is there a second, please?
Counsel Ingalls, second.
So, this is something we do every year, uh, joining in with other towns in Region Four. Uh, the towns jointly apply for Homeland Security Grants, uh, that we can use, and, and we have made great use of this program over the years. Um, for example, we've upgraded the radio systems for our emergency services, uh, police, fire, and other. We've bought equipment. I believe we may have bought SCUBA equipment for firefighters. Oh, and the total amount, I believe this year, is around $300,000 for the region that's available. And, uh, also, I think last year, if I recall correctly from the discussion, was about $382,000 that the region received. And the Memor- Memorandum of Agreement states that, uh, if we receive equipment through these grants, we will make that equipment, uh, it, it will be used with Region Four, and may be available to other towns in the region. So, it's a very good program. We do it every year, and this, this is just something that we have to sign, both the, uh, we have to make the application and the Memorandum of Agreement.
Very good. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment. This is Counsel Malone. Uh, Bill, not to correct you, but it's not SCUBA, it's SCBA, uh, is the terminology for the attacks.
Yeah, thank you.
And I do agree with you, we have got a lot of mileage out of this grant every year, and it does provide some vital equipment that our firefighters, uh, need, and, and other emergency services, but, you know, mostly it goes to the firefighters. So, uh, this is a great opportunity for us to get some money to keep our emergency services running that top notch.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just, just a quick thing, just a quick thing from the Mayor.
Yes.
Um, there are 41 towns in Region Four. Uh, the way this grant works is until, unless and until all 41 towns complete this process that we're going through right now and submit it, no money is released. So, uh, sometimes we have to pull teeth with some of the other remaining towns. Last year, we had a couple very late stragglers, but, um, to the point of the, uh, equipment, a lot of the equipment is stored at the Council of Governments. They have a, a warehouse building up there, and generators and, uh, light boards, towable light boards and directional arrows, all sorts of things are readily available to us. Um, that is also funded through this program. All we really have to do is request it, and then go get it ourselves, and then just return it to them. So, it's a nice regional asset.
Very good. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item, please.
I move that the town transfer up to $14,000 from account 21090305-58915, C N R Undesignated, to account 1011401-47009, Miscellaneous Revenue, and appropriate up to $14,000 to account 10120551-56799, Gales Ferry Fire Vehicle Equipment Parts, to replace the generator on Gales Ferry Engine 21. In addition, grant a bid waiver to Bulldog Fire Apparatus of Bosworth, Connecticut, to replace the Gales Ferry Engine 21 generator, due to not receiving the required three quotes in accordance with Ordinance Number 200-001, an ordinance for purchasing agenda item. I'm sorry, an ordinance for purchasing.
Second.
So, uh, last week, last week, uh, the generator on Engine 21, uh, failed. It, it literally blew up. Uh, the, the engine was taken to Bulldog Fire Apparatus in Franklin. They eval- evaluated the equipment. They said that rebuilding the generator would cost $8,000. We're 11 years into a 20-to-25-year-old truck, and they also gave us a quote for, and they recommended that the generator be replaced with a new one. And the cost of replacing the generator, uh, the ins- the generator itself, new, installation, connection, shipping, um, and also the cost of removal inspection of the old generator, uh, would cost us $14,000, or less than that. At Finance, we talked about getting two additional bids last week. There's a certain amount of urgency. We have the engine back in Gales Ferry, but, uh, if they have to use that engine to go to a fire, that generator is used to operate light towers and other electric equipment at the scene. Uh, generators are heavy. They have to be hauled onto the truck, hauled off the truck, started, connected. Um, it's much better to have the equipment on the truck, and as I think everyone knows, every single second in a fire counts. So, fooling around, getting a generator off the truck, on the ground, connected and started, is multiple seconds, if not minutes. Um, so, we had, we felt a sense of urgency to bring this to the Council right away. We asked, uh, Gales Ferry Fire Company to get two more quotes. They actually did, um, but one was verbal, uh, to Jeff Smith. The other was an inter- internet quote, which I think we got yesterday, or maybe today. Um, both are about the same amount of money, and they do not include, uh, installation of the new generator. Uh, Counsel Malone asked a question about where the generator is made. It was manufactured in this country. It's, uh, it's a USA manufacturer. Um, so, we think this is important to do. The bid waiver is just to make sure that we dot all our i's, cross our t's. As I say, we do have two other quotes. They're not just written and, and, uh, not as substantial as the one we have. Also, the other two companies kind of sensed that, well, they must have asked questions, but they kind of sensed that we were just out getting quotes. So, they, they seemed reluctant to put it, put a lot of work into it. Uh, finally, we have, uh, Steve Holyfield, uh, attending the meeting with us, as well as Jeff Smith, and we may have Jeff Earhart. I, I just see Jeff. I'm not sure which Jeff it is. So, uh, if they have anything to add, uh, please do. Or if anyone has questions for them.
Anyone?
Hi, Bill, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Jim, uh, you know, this is something we need to move forward, because, you know, when they pull up on scene, we're always critically short on manpower, and now you need to worry about placing more people to get a generator set up? This is something that needs to move forward quickly. I mean, manpower is a big issue, and, you know, it's just something we need to do.
And I will call for the roll, and we will do it, Jim. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, Jim. Next item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, firefighters, for attending. Uh, okay, I move, uh, that the Town Council approve the transfer of tax accounts in the amount of $66,000, I'm sorry, $66,702.97, listed in the report dated May 28, 2020, to the suspense file. In addition, authorize the transfer of non-refundable overpayments in the amount of $258.60 to the general fund, listed in the report dated May 28, 2020.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Chairman Davis. So, uh, interesting discussion came out of, uh, this motion last week. We asked some questions. Uh, we asked, is this amount more or less than the previous year's amount? Uh, and I should explain, first of all, the suspense file is three years of uncollectible taxes that we have to move off of the council, or off of the town books, that, uh, appear to be receivables, and receivables are an asset, and because they are not really receivable, we've been trying for three years to collect them, we have to stop counting them as a receivable, um, or an asset. We do continue collection efforts, so we're just moving them from one account to another. So, question was, is it more than last year's, uh, account? Because these are delinquent taxes that have not been paid after up to three years of attempts to collect. Uh, it's $14,000 more than last year's suspense file. Um, and last year's file was, we found that it, there were two different numbers, and we had originally approved about $53,000, and as it turned out, the total was $52,000. I'm giving you rough numbers. And as it turned out, someone actually paid their taxes between the time we moved on it and the time it was, was actually filed. Um, and the last question was, how many years back does this go? It's three years of uncollectible taxes, so it goes back to 2015 through 6/30/19. Um, and the total amount in the file is $66,000. That's the last three years, but, or maybe it's, uh, just the last year. But, the total amount of dollars in the file, as of 6/30/2019, was $611,000 that we are still trying to collect. Um, and the $66,000 is just this year. That's all I have.
Any questions? Uh, Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls? Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Uh, next item.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I just want to add one more comment. Uh, the $66,000 up, up, in this past year amounts to about 0.2% of the taxes that the town collects. So, uh, as we all know, the tax collector does an outstanding job, uh, collecting taxes, and also, our, our property owners do an outstanding, standing job of paying those taxes. So, just want to make that point. It's about 0.2%. Um, so, I move to approve, uh, proposed amendments to the General Government Grant Application Policy and Process to Include Federal Regulations for Applying for Federal Funding, as contained in the draft dated June 24, 2020.
Second, please.
So, uh, we already have a grant application process. Uh, a couple of years ago, the town wrote an ordinance which said that, uh, even though items may come to the town for free, it still costs money to own things. So, the ordinance says that if we apply, if any, any organization within the town, uh, wants to apply to receive something, or either through a grant, or to just receive a piece of equipment or an asset, uh, that they go through the Town Council to make sure that, that the town does not incur additional costs in owning that, uh, asset down the year, down the road. Um, so, uh, what we're doing is administrative change to comply with federal funding, and that says, in the ordinance now, that the grant seeker must include acknowledgement in the grant request form that they have read, understood the federal government procedures for federal funding and application and use of grant funds. So, we're just adding a few lines to an existing ordinance. That's the only change.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Just for clarification, this is a policy process. It's not a ordinance, um, so-
Thank you, yes, yes, yeah, yeah, it's a policy.
An ordinance, we would have had a, through a public hearing process.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Um, I just wanted to make another comment. Bill, you made a comment on number nine, and you said we have a, a tax collector that does a very excellent job of collecting, and also, our taxpayers are very good about paying. And I should also mention, we have a very, um, effective attorney, uh, when it gets down to that, as far as collections. Um, and, and we do have a tax sale once in a while, so, um, we, it's not that it just goes away. It just, um, we, we persist, so.
Yep.
I di- I didn't want anybody to think that we just say, "Oh, well, they didn't pay," and we move on.
Exactly, yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a constant process, so.
Yeah, it, it certainly appears that way when we do that, so, yeah, thank you for clarifying.
I know, but, yes, it makes, it looks like we, we make it just disappear, um, and we don't. Uh, next item, um, let's see. Uh, Andre, do you want to take this one, please?
Sure. Where are we? So, we're number 11?
Yeah.
Yeah, motions, the virtual video, sure. So, I make a motion to set a virtual video conference public hearing on Wednesday, August 26th, 2020, at 6:30 PM, to receive comments and recommendations regarding proposed amendments to Ordinance Number 300-029, formerly Number 34, an ordinance regarding control of alcoholic beverages at Town of Ledyard facilities, as contained in the draft dated February 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. This is just setting a public hearing. Uh, there's been a lot of ti- time spent on this one as well. Um, any comments? Uh, I will call the roll at this time.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Uh, next item, Andre.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Ian Stammel to the Pension Board, now called the Retirement Board, as a non-voting ex officio member, town employee, in accordance with Ordinance Number 200-010, an ordinance establishing retirement plans and a retirement board- Number 200-010, an ordinance establishing retirement plans and a retirement board for the Town of Ledyard General Government and a Board, and Board of Education employees to fill a vacancy left by Mrs. Goslin's retirement.
Second.
Uh, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, our next meeting, um, as we always do in August, is canceled. Um, obviously, if any business comes up that we need a meeting, we will do that. Uh, that will give everybody a time to, um, hold their subcommittee meetings. So, um, I hope we'll see lots of extra people at the subcommittee meetings. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, I don't know that any, did somebody make the motion?
Oh, move to adjourn?
And second, please.
Second.
I think, I think we're, I think we're adjourned just in time. Things are getting kind of hairy here, so.
A little garbled.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, yes, without, um, I, I will, uh, call this meeting adjourned without exception. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.